Five, and five, four, three.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 23rd, 2014 meeting of the NIC Board of Trustees. Would you all join the board in pledging allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
There's a verification of the quorum. All the trustees are present, and I'm going to ask, have you had an opportunity to review the minutes, and are there any suggestions with regard to revisions to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes are deemed approved as presented. The next item on the agenda is the President's Report, and before we get to that --
There isn't one.
But before we get to that, as you all know, we, at the last meeting, indicated that we were going to dedicate this meeting to a few housekeeping matters, but essentially to discussing the professional technical slash career technical facilities that we've been working on for a long period of time. So you'll see the agenda is abbreviated this time. We have no constitual reports, and as we move on through this, you'll see that I hope we were able to get to the fundamental part of the agenda pretty quickly. Before we do that, though, because this meeting is about trying to move NIC forward with regard to the career technical, I think it's even more appropriate than the normal that we start this meeting out with reading the mission statement, which is that North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the northern Idaho community it serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning. Now let me move on to the President's Report.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Is he doing a report, or are we working on his contract?
No, the -- because of the potential for duration tonight, we will forego the President's Report this month.
So the President's Report is no report tonight. Next is new business, and we have the President's Contract, and the Board has had an opportunity to review that contract and discuss it with President Dunlap, and I would ask for a motion now with regard to the contract.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Kristi.
With great pleasure, I'd like to make a motion to extend President Dunlap's contract. I'd like to include in my motion that Dr. Dunlap is a great leader of the college. He takes the feedback from the Board to heart. He has to work with five Board members who are very different people. And another great thing that Dr. Dunlap does is he hires very well. Look at his administrative team. They work hard, they support him, they support the college, they support the Board, and so it is with great pleasure that we extend his contract.
And we need a second to the motion.
Meyer happily seconds that.
All right. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I'm in favor, so the contract is approved. The next item on the new business agenda is an item that was presented to us with regard to use of NIC facilities for the Fourth of July events parking. And who's going to make a presentation on that? Graydon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. President Dunlap, another guest tonight. Unfortunately, the proposal has been turned back a little bit in that the information that we got from the Chamber, they're not able to move forward with what their proposal was, but I want to share this with you quickly. We've been giving a lot of consideration certainly over the last two years about other ways to produce revenue to help support the mission of the college here. One of those that we've certainly looked at is parking on this campus, and specifically special event parking, oftentimes when our parking lot is used for either events that occur on campus or close to the campus here. We've looked for opportunities to capitalize, if you will, a bit on that and generate some revenue that could be used to support the instructional, the teaching mission of the college as well. All of you as Board members know the, certainly the difficulties we've faced relative to budget, and if this was a way to help us out to those ends, we've looked for those opportunities. One that came to us most recently came through the Chamber of Commerce, associated with the July 4th events and activities here. We had conversations with them about their interest in obtaining additional parking. Included in that was being able to, for them to obtain additional revenue to help support particularly the July 4th fireworks, but all the activities that occur on that day. So the proposal that they presented and we talked to them about was potentially revenue sharing, that if they would provide the parking management here, using Diamond Parking, who's been provided, been providing that on our campus the last couple of years, and certainly manages the city's parking as well, and the other July 4th parking that the Chamber contracts with both the city and Diamond to manage for downtown. So we met with them, they're real interested in doing a revenue share on that, a 50-50 split after expenses. We put together estimated revenue, estimated split, and unfortunately, this occurred at such a late date that as we were working through the logistics of that, Diamond Parking has expressed to them that they're unable to staff that. So in terms of making that decision for this year about charging for Fourth of July parking on our campus, sharing revenue with the Chamber of Commerce, generating revenue for the institution, that's off the table for July 4th. It's certainly a consideration for us from a staff point. We're interested in pursuing that partnership with, partnership with the Chamber in the future. There's a business plan that we're putting together now that has to do with Art on the Green. I think all of you know that event in, in, in early August is on our campus, three days' worth consumes most of our parking here on campus. The person in charge of that, Mike Dodge, has told us the last couple of years, he said if you'd like to charge for parking, that's certainly fine with us as an event sponsor. You should probably know in both cases, on the Fourth of July and Art on the Green, that we incur a substantial amount of costs associated with both of those events. I asked Kim Browning, who's our facility and events coordinator, to track some of that down. Our cost for this year's Fourth of July events for the extra security, the extra porta-potties that we have to provide, and the extra facility staff amounts to about $3,300 of cost for us. For the Art on the Green, the estimate based on last year's expenses was about $7,700. So the institution, as a good community partner, certainly incurs some costs with that. Our opportunity to recover that cost and in fact make additional revenue to support the operations of the college is ahead of us. So while we don't need to make a decision about that tonight, I would certainly welcome any input from the Board. I anticipate that we'll be presenting to the administration a plan to look at that for this year's Art on the Green, that coming up in August, and certainly next year. I know Steve at the Chamber was disappointed that the circumstances didn't work out, and I know that he'll be back with us wanting to partner again for next year. So I would love to either now or at a later date, get the sense of the Board for how you, how you feel about that. I would add one other note to that. Our hope is, as we go through some evolution here with campus security and parking, that we would be in a position either later this summer, certainly next year, to manage that parking on our own. And so instead of having to share some of our revenue with either the Chamber or with Diamond Parking, that it's something that we think we could probably manage with mostly our own staff or contracted a minimal rate and really increase the amount of revenue that was available to us. So that's our plan for the future, is a way to generate some other revenue. Be glad to answer any questions.
Good.
Graydon, I liked that last little bit there. Extend that a little further, instead of staff, or maybe staff, but instead of contracting it out, could that be something to use for work-study hours for some of those students?
Absolutely. Trustee Banducci, one of the models we looked at, and it was just too short a time to try to implement this, was to be able to utilize that to benefit a number of other groups. It could be work-study students. We also started looking at student clubs and organizations. I think most of you know the Booster Club and the Athletic Department has managed or helped with some of the parking out at the North Idaho Fair.
Yep.
And so we've looked for other opportunities to use that money to support clubs, organizations, students, and programs here by utilizing their staff. We'll certainly be looking at that model.
Any other questions or comments? I have a comment only. I agreed to put this on the agenda this time because I was of the impression that the deal was close to being made and --
So were you.
And the only proviso was that I wanted to see the details of it, and obviously the details are not available, and hence your comments, and I appreciate that. But this has happened like for three years in a row, where very shortly before the Fourth of July event, we have a request to provide facilities and this and any other thing, and I would hope that we have learned a lesson that we need to do this far enough in advance that the Board can take a look at, not just the concept, but the details. Because we are looking for new methods of revenue, and there are growing events in this area, Ironman, you know, and other things. And we need to have a policy about what we're going to be doing, about the parking that's available to, to the downtown area. And so I would hope that we can come up with a policy that you would present to the Board as quickly as possible, so we can address it as an overall policy with enough details that we know where we're heading with it.
Absolutely.
So I would appreciate that.
Be glad to do that, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, because we know the Fourth of July is going to come again next year, right?
We're quite certain.
Could we then ask that sometime on the fall agenda, if it gets on the agenda? That help move it along?
Maybe even before that, eh?
Certainly before that. I think we're prepared. I know that Kim Browning again has put together a business plan. She and a committee of folks here on campus, who are the most vested stakeholders, have put together a business plan for Art on the Green. I'd be really glad, as we do just a couple more refinements, to be able to send that out. I know we don't have a Board meeting for July, but I can certainly share that through PC and with the Board as well, and solicit your feedback that way. So I think we're prepared. I had financials for you on this. Unfortunately, the plug got pulled on this just today, so our plan all along was to present you with the revenue projections and the whole deal, but that got pulled.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Kristi.
I would like to see this fall into the purview of Dr. Dunlap. I don't, I feel no personal reason why I need to review parking, and we're not going to have another Board meeting, they've got an event coming up, so I would just like to refer it back to the administration.
Can we make a motion towards that?
I make a motion? I move to refer the parking issue to Dr. Dunlap and his administrative team.
Second?
Second, Meyer.
Any discussion? Trudy?
I think I agree. The only proviso put is, I think the administration knows the policy of the Board is being a good neighbor, working with the community. You already have that sense, and I would endorse that as part of your criteria as to how you make the deal. Go for it.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So Dr. Dunlap.
Thank you very much.
Good idea, Christopher.
You're the man. Park them away.
We are now going to move into the main element of our meeting tonight, which is the career technical facility issue. In trying to figure out a way to do service to the wide range of facilities that we're looking at, the amount of money that is necessary in order to meet some of the needs that we want to meet, and how we're going to acquire that, those funds, I want to see if we can't deal with a meeting in those elements, maybe with the site first and the, the amount of the, that the Board would authorize, and then second, and thirdly, maybe the method by which we're going to acquire those funds. In advance of that, we have kind of a leftover from last meeting in that when we had the report from Mr. Teeter on the K-Tech location, the Riverbend location, and the campus locations, we had overlooked the, the report, or the offer that had been made by the Jacklin Seed Company with regard to their facility, and we asked Mr. Teeter to go out and make an evaluation between last meeting and this, and would you, Mr. Teeter, come forward and make, give us a report on what you were able to find? I realize it was a short time, but if you would, tell us what you were able to find in your evaluation of that site.
We have material here also, right?
Mr. Chairman, do you want to talk just exclusively about the Jacklin part of this?
Yes, please.
Okay. We, we do, we did provide for you folks, I believe, a draft statement. We, we were hustling around to try to get that done in time.
Yeah, we have that, yes.
And you do have that. The, although it is at draft stage, I think we're, I think it's very close. The, when you look at the, the evaluation of the facility, it's pretty clear that if you take the value of the property that's there and the tenant improvements that we'd have to make to have that be an equitable facility with all of the others that we've looked at, that it's, there certainly isn't any cost savings to that. I've talked with Bruce Seer, who's kind of been working with us on this. I think Bruce concurred with, with that part of it, but I think that the important part about the Jacklin proposal is that it offers an alternative to the Board if we choose not to put the, not to find a permanent home for the CTE building. Now, it doesn't mean that the Jacklin property couldn't be a permanent home, but the cost, as we've evaluated it, would exceed some of the other properties that we've looked at over the 10-year period in their proposal. And I think we have to remember that that Jacklin property, we're starting with a facility that's approximately 30 years old to begin with, and would require some significant improvements. One of the things that came up just in discussions today with that was that Jacklin also has property that they could provide for us for storage, and to the extent that the Board would ever use addition, or need additional facilities for student services, there are additional properties adjacent to or close to that that could be woven into that deal. So even though it does not compare favorably as a long-term solution, it does offer the Board some options.
Any questions with regard to the review of the Jacklin facility by Mr. Teeter?
Just, I'm sorry, the material we're working off of, you just handed us now, was the draft, which is two-sided report. Okay, so I'll be sure to turn it over and see all of it. Thank you. And then we also have information from Bruce Seer that was given to us today.
Yes.
Again, I want to be sure we have the information, all of it. Thank you.
Any other, any questions?
Just a comment, Mr. Chair. Dave, thank you for reviewing the Riverbark, excuse me, the Jacklin site. I think it's important that we did gather all the information, and I, I agree strongly with the statement of Bruce Seer that this was an option for us to consider without having to go to a bond. And I, I so appreciate that they stepped forward as members of our community and came up with that option for us, because it's, it's certainly something to consider, and we, we're all looking at it, and I just want to express a lot of appreciation to the Jacklins for that.
Any more comments? Thank you. We'll let you sit down, and what I'd like to do is move on to the deliberative stage of our meeting tonight. And preface it by saying this, over the last several years, and I say several years because I think we could all disagree on how many years we've been considering this, but it's been a long time. This Board has looked at a lot of information. We've engaged in different studies. We've, some of them, we've hired out some of them, we've had studies, and we've had open hearings here. And this Board has listened and listened intently to the community and the studies and the information that's been presented to us, and realizing that in making a decision about this career technical facility planning, that by making a decision now, we're really setting a path for the future, and that it's a very important decision to the entire, not just, not just the Cootney County community, but those other communities that we serve. And so we've listened and listened intently to what everybody has said, and we thank the community and thank everybody who's come forward with information, and their opinions and their analyses about what should happen with this career facility. Now it's our opportunity and our responsibility to make decisions on that. And I'm going to ask that this, we opened this up with a discussion, just an open discussion amongst the Board members, asking them to give us their impressions about facilities that they support, either initially that's their strongest support, or if they have secondary options that they are looking at. And let's talk about the site first, because that seems to be most prominent in everybody's mind. And Ron, I'm going to start with you and ask you to make some comments, and then we're going to do this for no more than about 25 minutes, and then we're going to look to see if there's a vote. If people want to talk and discuss it more, we'll discuss it more, and I'm going to try and move through it in an orderly fashion, so we get something achieved. I don't want to cut anybody off. I want everybody to have an opportunity to speak their, their thoughts, but we want to do it in a way that hopefully we will be able to eliminate possibilities, move down to a, an ultimate decision tonight. So, Ron, don't take up the whole 25 minutes, please. Okay.
Turn the camera over.
First of all, is when I came onto this Board two years ago, my intention was to, to be a part of this Board, to make sure before I make any decision of this magnitude that, that a lot of thought and preparation went into this. And so for the last two years, we've been discussing this, digesting information, visited CTE facilities all over the campus. To give you an idea, that this Board has authorized in the last 10 years, over $300,000 worth of contract consulting. We have a number of these. I think there's five that we've done regarding CTE. We call it PTE here, where our goal is to change that so we fit in with the rest of the country. So when we talk about, we can keep gathering data, we gather data, and we're always going to come back to the same thing, which is the people that want it here, because it's close to home, the people that want it in Pulse Falls because they live in Pulse Falls, the people out at K-Tech, and we're going to have this ongoing discussion. You're not going to win a unanimous decision by any means. But through my investigations, I was heavily involved in K-Tech back in the mid 2000s. Part of the reason, if you don't know, the reason for K-Tech that came to be was that the NIC had not lived up to their commitment to service. We ranked one of the worst in the nation in the number of CTE or PTE students as a percentage of a community college. We're, we're not doing much better than that, and, and we've done a lot with what we have, but until we make a commitment as a community to support a community college that's mission is to prepare a skilled and trained workforce and to build us a world-class CTE campus, we're, we're going to continue to be bouncing around this another 10 years from now. So we had, and Dave, thank you, where's Dave Teeter? Thank you for putting this together. It was very helpful. I was hoping that I would learn something completely new, but you can see by all the notes and the scribblings and all that type of stuff, usually when we get something, we start slicing and dicing. So I took it upon myself, we, you gave us a total of three pros for the K-Tech site, and of course, I leaned toward going to K-Tech for a number of reasons. I'm going to go there. Generous parking, community support, proximity to K-Tech, and solar potential. That's it. That was our pros for going to K-Tech. Cons were, which were really interesting, was its off-site cost and impact fees. Now that we've went and pushed on this envelope a little bit, we find out that the city of Rathrum was responsible building K-Tech. They were very aggressive in their way of handling it, and that Mr. Dean Hagenson, who built the site out there, will tell you that they were very easy to work with, and that the city of Rathrum is committed to assess no impact fees. And so when you get into working with this and you say off-site cost and impact fees, Mr. Hagenson will tell you that we save money by building that out in the Rathrum site. Then there was a terminology of cons, which was unknown approval process. We're not even sure what that meant. Require student support areas. They proposed in this presentation for the first 30-something million-dollar process was a 16,000-square-foot student service building. I can't imagine anybody believing that we have to have a 16,000-student service building. Today, we service welding, outdoor recreation facility, and repair off-site, and we do that by the student coming in at the beginning of the semester, being registered, and he goes out to get his job, and to get his education, so he get his job. So to say that we have to build a 16,000-square-foot student service building, which I look at it a little bit more as saying, well, why would they do that? Well, inflates the numbers and then tilts the, the scale. And then they talk about less efficient maintenance. So when I look at this, I said, let's put a realistic pros and cons. First of all, K-Tech is right next door to the land that NIC chose. We didn't choose that. NIC, back in 2005, bought 150 acres and was going to build, and here, if you haven't seen it before, this is a 2005 study, that they were going to build a $67 million professional technical education campus out there. 67 million. So now we've got this price down to less than half of that, and we're not considering that as a site that we bought the property. So we can do what we're charged to do, fiduciary responsibility as Board members, which is number one, is we have a responsibility to our taxpayers. If we build it next to K-Tech, we can save the taxpayers' money by building it probably on the cheapest site in Cootney County, but also that we can share resources. We can share faculty, we can share teachers, and we can joint-use the facilities. There's times where K-Tech is sitting idle with nobody in there at night, that we could use those classrooms to be able to do that. Right now, we do have teachers moving back and forth between there, and we think that this is going to force a smaller footprint for us to build. So when we talk about site options, one of the things that they have, there's some people here that believe that K-Tech, we just don't like the name K-Tech. It stands for Cootney, that's the county we're in, Technical Education Campus. That's what it stands for. That is what we're trying to do, is to create a campus that, or a regional CTE center that the whole community from Spokane Valley to Kellogg, to south to north, can come here. So we're talking about a central. Again, remember that our friends at NIC, Rowley Will Jurgens, told us that they've spent a lot of money and energy trying to find a central location, traffic movement, and what was the best for there? They chose that location, and we agree with that. The most central in the county? No question. When you talk about, people say, well, I live in, up by Costco, and I, that's going to be far to me to drive. Not quite the contrary. If you drive it, you're going to find out that most of the people can get to this K-Tech site in a more efficient fa, it's not miles, it's time when you get down here. Mr. Hagenson also went through and read this CTE report that was done in 2005, and he goes back to the vision and, and sent me this deal saying, well, Ron, they're the ones that said that this is the vision of where we're going, and I'll read it. This is what the consultant says. "A seamless system for professional technical education builder on a strong community partnership. This system will address the educational needs from grades 11 through 14." They were already talking about grade 11 and 14. We have an 11 and 12, so now we should be talking about 13 and 14. They go on to talk about shared facility, they talk about career paths, they talk about shared curriculum. When we heard that we can't build this, the same thing that we build at K-Tech, because curriculum drives the square footage, we use the same curriculum at K-Tech as they use here, the exact same curriculum that's being used, and we talk about, they go on to say about how important this shared relationship is in a community for building economic stimulation to our area, and that's what we're trying to do as a community. All of our, our mayor from Rathrum's here, he has a lot of manufacturing and needs for people in the world. So does Steve Widmire, so does the people in Pulse Falls. So we have to have to look at this as a facility that's going to service our community. Parking, oh, this is one of the one. We have, everybody that comes on this campus knows we have a problem with parking. So why all of a sudden are we going to address that as a con? We don't mention this as a problem here. We've got a parking problem here, and we continue to deal with this. 40 acres is bought and paid for out there, parking will not be a problem there. That, the, given the CTE its own image, its own success, that we can live up to NIC's commitment to make this K-Tech community one of the best educational joint-use facilities in, in the country, and we believe that we can build this, not for the 67 million that was proposed in 2005, not the $30 million that, that was proposed on the last go-around. Now we think, we think that we can build this for $15 million. Now, we think, we think that we can build this for $15 million, and that we can do this and be able to do number one, which is build it cheaper. But let's don't forget why we paid $10 million for that piece of dirt that's out there on the river there. That was the education corridor. Are we forgetting that if we put in 160,000-square-foot building, 160,000-square-foot of parking, and then with all the roundabouts, we don't have no square footage to build a joint-use facility. Let's preserve this education corridor for its purpose. And last but not least, can you imagine with the disruption that we're having here? We go build something on this campus, and we go build this 100,000-square-foot building with the trucks and the things that go on there, this disruption is going to again devastate this educational institution. When they do that, they started, broke ground, Dean had it done, and we had students in operation in nine months, because there was no disruption. So, when they talk about driving distance, the kid comes down to campus, signs up, goes, he goes back, he doesn't need to come back here again. We don't need the 16,000 square feet. We talk about less maintenance, less cost of maintenance. We put a full-time maintenance person. There's not less cost of maintenance, it mean more cost of maintenance for us to be out there. And the higher impact, gee, that was not true, an unknown approval process. So, you can tell by the time and the energy that a number of people that have came out in full support of this, which is our chamber executive directors, all of our school superintendents, the K-Tech Board, most of the business CEOs that have a need for these students, the two largest builders in this area, which is John Yoon, and Dean Hagenson has experience for doing this, Jim Coleman, Tim Combreck, who's in charge of economic development at a national level, Tim Fortuner, Executive Director, and the list goes on and on and on. I think that we have to take the emotion out of this, that it's not going to be on the campus, and look at this thing objectively, because this is where it needs to be built.
Okay, thank you. Judy?
Thank you. I want to be sure to thank K-Tech for all it has done. I was able to tour there this last week, and gained again what I've seen before, but more insight into the value of it, Ron. I think today, as a board, as we talk about this, I'd like to hear from all the board members on the four sites that we have before us. Let's see, four site, or four, F-O-U-R site. And I wanted to come back to the Jaclyn one, for instance, because that has had less discussion amongst us, now that we have this material. I think what I heard Dave say was the Jaclyn site was a 30-year-old building, and for me, that's a concern as we look at the options with it. For me, to pull together all the various pieces we have, and Ron, you've done a good job with that, and we certainly do have lots of information, I made a chart that I would like to share with the board, and then walk it through with the board, so we can talk together about the choices we have. So, how about if I hand this to you? Because my criteria on the chart, as you'll see, go ahead, Kristi. Thank you, was evaluating student success. And I think, let's walk through it, because I think, this is the first time you've all seen it. It's nothing new, it's things that we haven't talked about. And I would start with the issue of where our students experience in education. So, on this chart for student success, I ranked, put a number by each of these things, and then I'd like to talk about it, for what I value it and how you see it. On the student mix, where will our CT students go? And where would they mix well? I felt that on the main campus, we have more mixing of more students, and so, I ranked it high, scores being four to one, four being high. And as you can see in my comments on the right, I'm concerned about 28-year-olds mixing with 17-year-olds. That's not good, not bad, it's just a factor I think we, as a board, need to think about. Does that help students have success? And Mr. Chair, I don't know, shall we go through these all at once, and then come back and discuss them? What's the best way? Wouldn't do it one by one?
No, I'm happy to have your comments on all of the sites that have been proposed. This is a general discussion, and then we'll get specific.
Come back around to it. Good. Because I would welcome my board members' comments. Another item I identified was access to best student help resources. We've talked about that, for where can people get to the advising, the counseling, the financial aid, tutoring, the library, and campus life and activities. And some folks have said, gee, we don't need campus life activities, we just need to get a skill and get a trade. That may be for some folks, but I think the enrichment of being on campus has value. So, I rated access to student help, particularly for folks in career and technical, where understanding financial aid and some of the things that maybe academic students have had more experience with, would be very valuable to career technical people, particularly as often is the case, career technical come back at a later age, where they may not have been part of the school system for a while. We want to make them successful by helping them persevere and complete what they're trying to do, whether it's a certificate now and coming back for more later, or whatever their program is. So, access to best student resources, I put as, again, a four, a high for me, that's very valuable. Riverbend, I don't see that happening as much, nor in Rathrum. At K-Tech, student success, best persistence rates, that's one grade, and you've been teaching us about how do we help these folks persevere through the challenges they have, both financial, all those challenges. Again, I think the main campus has those resources available. That's not the case as much. Some at Riverbend, because I know we have some classes there, but really not many career technical. And Rathrum, again, not as much enrichment potential. My next item was best synergy with other college opportunities, and there's no doubt that here on campus, where we're with the University of Idaho and LCSE, I think has great advantages, not only for certificate degree folk, but the A-folk that want to go on. LCSE, I know, has programs in management of business, and so, I ranked that as high. I don't see that the case at Riverbend. Although the University of Idaho is there, they're not particularly providing any teaching and classes or enrichment that occurs here on the Ed campus. The next item was best synergy with K-Tech as a feeder to NIC, and that's certainly, Ron, one we've talked about, and we, as a college, agreed to years ago. And I was on the board at the time, we said, we would like to buy that land. And I'm not ashamed to say, at the time, I thought that was the right choice. That was before the education campus, and I think that's changed. And part of education is adapting to the new knowledge and new information, which is the campus is well-qualified here and well-suited, and I don't see any reason not to spend money on land right, to build the buildings here. There's, the land is no more valuable for career technical than it is for academic programs. So, the K-Tech feeder, my comments here, and I ranked that as two with main campus, two with Riverbend, two with Rathrum. Similar level of success for students here. But then, when I look at the statistics from K-Tech right now, with students who have come from K-Tech, therefore, the synergy to feed into our programs, the information I have says that not that many students have actually come on into our programs.
Mr. Chairman?
And we'll come back to it.
No, no, let her finish, and then, please write down any comments. And I'm happy to let people respond.
Oh, I count on that, because this is the information I have. Let's see if this tests out. So, the K-Tech combination there of students actually coming and enrolling directly at NIC. I would hope students finish at K-Tech, try out the world a bit, and come back to NIC programs for further enrichment. I don't see how in our wage scale here in Cootney County, we can't have folks come back and get more tuned up, so that they can continue a career progress and wage increase. The final comment on student success possibilities with these three sites out of the four, is best cross-utilization of K-Tech equipment. And that's one where some of the programs at K-Tech now, welding and auto, there's not much cross-pollination there, and the stage of the equipment is one that will always be a challenge, because we can, need to spend as much money as we can to have most current, state-of-the-art machinery. And that is not the case right now at K-Tech. That may change, that's fine to talk about. In the cost considerations on the chart you have in front of you, I looked at the student services facilities capital cost. That's one we've talked about with Dave Teeter's study, where at the main campus, we have those student service facilities right here, right now, and they're working well for the students we have now. We're going to keep getting better at helping students be successful for persistence and completion. Riverbend, there may be some value, because we have some programs there, I put a one, and Rathrum a one. If we go off-site to deliver those services, some of the numbers have been suggested at considerable cost with the, providing those services. Ron, no matter what the square footage is, these folks still would not be available all the time to students who are coming on occasion to their particular program that they're attending. So, I would feel like we would be better off on campus with those people available every day to be a resource for students who are taking classes. Operating costs, it seems to me, and certainly in our business world, proximity does have great value. And so, I said, we already have everything happening on campus, so I would rank the main campus as a number four for providing those services. Riverbend and Rathrum, I ranked it number one level, because, again, studies have suggested about a $300,000 year for off-site locations more. And I think David Teeter's letter to us today highlighted that. If you're doing 3 million over 10 years, 15 million over 50 years, it's a big number, and we don't have to have it. We can do it right here on campus where we're already set up. The next item was IT support, technical support. Don't know how all the other sites are, but if there's fiber, we still need network support, and the IT people help us make that more effective. Riverbend has some, I know, already. Rathrum may not have quite as much. Classroom cross-utilization advantages. To me, that's one of our strongest points here, board, for looking at the college. And I made it a number four, because we can afford to build all that we want to now. We know that programs may change, and will change along the way for career technical programs. And so, when, as they change, as long as we build a building that's very flexible in size, and that could be added on to, but at least it has a high ceiling, good floors, we can do that cost-effectively here on campus. When programs change, we could use some of the other classrooms that are already here on campus. And I know we've asked our staff already to look at utilization of buildings and classrooms here on campus, and I would expect that to continue. So, I feel like Riverbend has some classes. I don't see that as the case with K-Tech. Value to taxpayer for cost per student. I think using the education campus, education corridor, brings all of our programs together, not only for NIC, but for our sister institutions. So, I think I rated that as a four. The other school sites, Riverbend and Rathrum, provide clearly some value, but not as strong as on campus. And the basic building costs, the building of simple facilities, it's not clear for sure that site utilities might be less at main campus, but it's certainly likely. So, I ranked that as a four. And then, ranking by location, and here, I have to watch it, because I have a spelling error in the word merit at the end, I came up with a higher number. Out of the scale of four, I came at 3.82, for instance. I came up with Riverbend at about a value of two, and Rathrum in a little less than that. So, I wanted to walk these through. I think that probably will lead to plenty of discussion, which is the point of this meeting, and share with my board why I feel like the main campus is the best place to locate our PTE, CTE programs for now, and for the next 25 to 50 years.
Okay, thank you. Judy? Or, excuse me, Kristi? I didn't want Judy to go again.
Did you?
Yeah.
I mean, should I go before Ron wanted to ask something?
I got some questions, so...
Let me ask that we do this. Please write down your questions. I want everybody...
I got them here, waiting.
I know. Let's let everybody get an initial opportunity to make their statement, and then, we can open it up to questions across the board. I want to encourage that, but let's let everybody get a first shot at it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I'll tell you, we're fortunate to have a board, I think, I guess I'm speaking for myself when I say this, of this caliber, that I'm really focused on the two of you, and how much effort you've put into this. Really have done your homework, and I appreciate both sides of the equation. So, some of my thoughts are, the first thing that we always focus on are students. And what happens, though, is there's varying opinions on the focus on the students. So, if we, if one of us thinks we're focused on students, maybe the other thinks, well, you must not be focused on students. I know that one of Judy's key points here was 28-year-olds mixing with 17-year-olds, and we have that now with dual enrollment. So, I guess that I don't have a lot of fear with that mix. In fact, we encourage it. We want our dual-enrolled students to experience college classes. So, I don't get too concerned about that. But what I do know is, out of this board, I'm the only one that's been a student at NIC, and I've been a student twice, once in the 80s, and again in whatever. No. I was, since then. But I finished my education and got my bachelor's degree with our wonderful partner, Lewis Clark State College. And I know what mattered to me. And so, I'm going to share that experience. What mattered to me was what courses offered, what time of day, when can I get there, how's it going to fit into the rest of my schedule? Because this is my map for my life, and this is what I need to get my degree. And if there's something that came along on campus that was fun, in the 80s, for me, it was the basketball games. If that, if there was something I could do, that was fabulous. But my number one concern was my coursework. I knew what I needed to get on the road to success. I think, when you listen to Ron speak, he's very, very passionate, and even now, hearing him and really wanting to focus on strong relationships, I get a little defensive when Ron talks about, NIC didn't do what they were supposed to do, so we did K-Tech, because you're one of us now, Ron, and you know that...
I'm happy to be here, too.
Thank you. You know how many obstacles we have with finances and funding from the state. And so, it's not that easy just to pull together a professional technical facility. And so, I think we really need to talk about this relationship with K-Tech. I would say, first of all, kudos to all the people that came together and made K-Tech a reality. They worked really hard for it. I will tell you, there were some hard feelings, though, from this board, because this board was not really allowed to be part of it. And there were just hard feelings all the way around. And we were part of it by our faculty and staff sharing curriculum. We were part of it with the expertise of our administration, but we were not part of it as far as a real, true partnership, being a voted member on the K-Tech Board. And we wanted to be. We wanted to have that relationship and that synergy, and let's all move forward. And it didn't happen. Some of our administration felt that they were just given the old armbar if they wanted to be anywhere near the K-Tech Board meetings. And so, and I've talked to Ron about that, I've shared with him, you know, there's been some real hard feelings, and it's going to take some time to fix that, but we have to fix it. We just have to. No matter what decision is made tonight, we owe it to the students and to all the people in this county for elected officials to get along, and to make sure that we are sharing resources and sharing ideas. So, I hope comes out of this, is that we develop, and now with Ron on our board, I feel, and even, I just feel like it's bound to be, we will develop a strong relationship with K-Tech, no matter where we're located. What's intriguing to me is funding possibilities in the future. I look at the possibilities with K-Tech, and I don't think about how offended I was that I didn't get to be part of K-Tech. I think about what the possibilities are in the future. I think about working with three school districts and the college. And I've put a call into Senator Getty, since he wrote the legislation, and asked, he hasn't got back to me yet, John, if you're watching, please call me. The possibility of the college being added into that taxing district, if they ever went forward in the future, again, for another levy, to support any kind of equipment needs or an expansion at K-Tech, or an expansion at NIC, CTE facilities, that's very intriguing to me, that there would be maybe that kind of funding possibility, because one thing we do know is these programs are just going to continue to get incredibly expensive, and be very hard for a community college relying on taxpayer dollars and tuition to build our own facilities. We never wanted to be in this situation. We've never been in this situation before, where we, the taxpayers of Cootney County, build the facilities. We've always been able to rely on the state and the permanent building fund for facilities, and so, it's a very difficult position. So, that's intriguing to me, funding possibilities. Along with that is a united front with three cities, Rathrum, Pulse Falls, Coeur d'Alene, and North Otto College, going to our legislators and saying, we need your help. All three of these cities in the north are telling you, we need your help, make us your priority. That's intriguing to me. I think that's very powerful, those possibilities. The student services, I certainly understand that students do better when they have easy, accessible services. I think that we're just going to have to do the best we can. One thing we do know is that we're not required to have this square footage immediately, but we're required to have the services. but we're required to have the services. So what we should do, to be responsible, we should absolutely make that a priority to try to get the student services spaced there as soon as possible. The campus piece, for me, is hard to, I guess, really embrace. And that is because I do see, as hard as we work to acquire the Ed Corridor, and there's only so much land there, and we have plans for a joint-use facility, I see us being landlocked again, especially if we wanted to grow these programs 20, 30 years out. We don't even know what they're going to look like. And so I see us being landlocked again. And when we were landlocked before, it took a lot of work and a huge leap of faith to buy that land and go through a lot of angst to make sure we could have possibilities in the future. And there isn't any other land. So that concerns me. I also spend quite a bit of time in my other role for the police department as the person that meets with the homeowners association for the foreground. And I'm very concerned, we haven't talked to them at all, obviously, because we haven't made a decision, but there's a little bit of feedback on what would this facility, is this an industrial facility? Will there be big trucks? Well, there should be, if we're going to be dealing with that kind of, those kind of programs. And I'm not sure it's going to fit in to the neighborhood, and I think there would be some concerns about that. I also think that the history with the Ed Corridor and the idea of the joint-use facility, I will tell you, when NIC purchased the land, the great dream was that seamless education. And we would have U of I and LCSC and maybe BSU, and students would never have to leave home. They could get their associates all the way up to their doctorate, and they could stay right in their own community. Well, that dream is still alive, very much for all of us. But I remember the pushback. And the pushback was really from the university. Why, we're not going to be co-located with a community college. We're a university. And so it became very territorial. And they wouldn't have publicly stand it up, and I'm not trying to publicly embarrass any of them now, because it was a long time ago, and I'm not going to say that the leadership feels the same way right now. But it was, to me, the focus was more on territory and identity of institutions rather than what can we do for students? And once again, I kept thinking as myself, as a student, and what I needed. And I needed those opportunities. I didn't need somebody to have a territorial point of view. So I do, I think it's important that if we look at a joint-use, not a shared facility with K-Tech, but close to it, there's going to be a lot of opportunities for students. And if we just get a handful of K-Tech students that come over, that's fine. I'm okay with that. I wouldn't propose that we end up out there just for the K-Tech students, because we're looking at three cities in Cootney County. And these students' average ages are 28, so they're not really going to K-Tech anyway. So to wrap it all up, I'm intrigued with the idea of the partnerships. That's what's selling me on the K-Tech location. I know I run the risk of the administration feeling that they're not heard and that we don't care about their opinion and how much effort they've put into giving us all the information about the campus. And I do struggle with that, because they are the professionals, and we certainly should give them their due. I've tried to look at everything, and I try to make the best decision I can, and I'm wanting to go out to K-Tech.
Thank you. Doug?
Thank you. Just have a few comments. I'm going to dovetail on some of what the other three have said. Although I would like to make one point of clarification, I think. Kristy touched on it. Is it, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that it has been agreed to that NIC will have a voting board member on the K-Tech board. Is that not true?
We have discussed that as a board. We're unanimous in an understanding, but it has to go at our next board meeting, which will be this coming Wednesday. So the intention is, we had no idea. We thought that NIC would be embracing the success that we had accomplished, where we graduated almost every kid, and 95% of them got jobs or went on to continued education. Incredible statistics, no matter how you slice it, that we thought that they would be embracing that. But we didn't know that they were still over there. So to answer your question, if that's going to heal some wounds here, we will put Mr. Browning, is there every single week? The only time he's not in that room is when we have executive session, which has happened twice in the history of K-Tech, which is where we discuss the salary of the administrator. So we don't hide nothing. We don't have one of these long, four-hour meetings here and a two-hour executive session and all these workshops. We're pretty quick in and out. So we'd love for somebody to come in and see the pace that we go there, and then we can come here and pick it up a little bit.
That was a short answer to your question.
I'm glad it was a Reader's Digest version, yes. Passionate advocate. Anyway, I look forward to Mr. Browning being a voting board member, I hope.
Oh, no. Excuse me, Mr. Banducci, but I thought it was going to be a board member, Ron. Was that the idea?
Well, we're talking about, we're talking about having one of our board members rotate on there, so...
In any event, that's probably not really relevant to what we're doing there.
It's not, but I just was curious, because I knew there'd been some movement along that to strengthen the relationship. Sorry, Mark. Thought you were the guy there.
Yeah. Do you have some thoughts with regard to these facilities?
Yes, sir, I do. Which, you know, I look at, I look at our current status, and I look at the facilities that we're utilizing in off-campus capacity. I see the welding facility, and I've been there several times. I look at the OPRV that's now been moved around a couple times. I've had the pleasure to be up at their aerospace facility a number of times, their recent open house, and I see her back there. I look at the Post and the graphic design folks out at Riverbend. And one of the things I tried to do is to sit back and chew on, how's that been working for us? And evaluate that concept of having some off-campus students in facilities. And has it, has it been a problem? And if so, to what magnitude? And has it somehow diminished their abilities to learn? You know, has it affected their academic achievement? Or have we been able to provide the appropriate training and education to them so they could go forward? And as I looked at it, thanks to a wonderful staff, I'd like to throw a shout-out to the instructors, because we have some pretty shabby facilities, especially welding right now, and OPRV was certainly pretty poor. We've done a fine job of preparing our people, our students. So I look at that model, and I don't think it's broke. So having said that, so that puts me in a spot where, okay, I'm not opposed to being off-campus. We'll look at this, but I don't see that as a negative. I don't think that's a pro or a con, per se. And then as I look at the campus, and I look at the space we have at Riverbend, which is about 11 acres, it's a composite of different parcels, and in the 40 acres that we have adjacent to the K-Tech facility, I see that as a very strong pro. And Ron alluded to that, footprint for the size of the facility, the ability to build out and expand, just the parking that commensurate with that size of facility. We're rather landlocked here, and space is very precious. And I think there'd be a tremendous disruption. Some people tell me we do not have a parking problem. We have a walking problem. Well, term it how you'd like. Either way, if you're parking in the South 40 and it's snowing, and the snow is going this way instead of this way, you really don't want to walk very far. And we do cater to people of all ages. And I know there are some seniors. I think Ken's wife, she comes and takes aerobics, I think, here, right? So I mean, you know, how far do you want to walk? So we need to be conscious of the fact that parking is always at a premium, and I want to see a large footprint that can accommodate that. And I think, one of the things I think is a real con here on the campus is to try to squeeze in additional parking. I'd rather have an instructor drive out to a facility, I think, and teach math or English to several classes, rather than having 20 or 40 or 60 students all come back and try to find parking spots and jam onto the campus. Not the least of which, I'd rather have one, maybe 40-year-old instructor on the roads instead of 60, 25-year-olds on the road, especially in the winter. So I think there's some things we can do, that we take the instructors to the kids, and I think logistically, that keeps it pretty simple. I don't know if we've done that in the past, but that's one thing I'd like to see incorporated in this. And I think K-Tech, that's one of the things that K-Tech can lend to it, is there can be some co-op and some sharing. You know, if there's a maintenance guy, he can go between buildings. If there's janitorial, they can go between buildings. Tim Fortune can teach welding. He can walk over and teach a night class. He's talked about that. So I think there is some synergy there. I think K-Tech is still so new that it's really hard to quantify what sort of migration we're going to get from those kids after they graduate into the NIC community. And whether that, whether they come into an academic transfer program, whether they come into a CTE, and even in CTE, whether they stay in that study of, that disciplinary study that they were in. They may have started in welding and may end up in diesel mechanics. So, but I think we're still a little early to try to quantify that. And I think as more graduates come out of the K-Tech program, hopefully, we'll see an increased influence from that. But hard to quantify. So obviously, we don't want to go to K-Tech strictly on that, and I think that's been touched on, too. But I think it's another positive to consider. And I think, too, you know, people lead by example, and they're mentored, and there's a community. So I think if you have some of these young kids, and dual enrollment, I think, is a very positive thing. I have a daughter-in-law that was at Charter Academy, did outstanding, and she was able to dual-enroll and then come to NIC for one year and get her associate's degree. Very proud of her, very bright. But she was encouraged, and she liked learning up, and even more rigorous than the Charter Academy or both, you know, she was working hard. But I think those students could be inspired by some of the students that we have, as they see the programs, and then they can maybe say, hey, I can walk across that parking lot, and that's where I'll be, and I'll continue on to my road to success and to get a job. So I think having that example right there could be very positive for those young people, help them with some more direction and motivation. One of the things, as I look at Riverbend, and I have to be honest, I've had some strong feelings towards Riverbend. I do like being on the I-90 corridor. I think there's tremendous visibility, which could be an advantage. There's things that take advantage there for marketing and for transportation. I like the idea of co-op with the Post program and the graphic design folks out there, Philippe's program. They're just, I mean, there's a perfect example. Philippe and his folks, they've won just a bunch of Addy awards here again, which is like their Oscars. They're just fantastic. In fact, one of his students stood up when we had all these talks, and she said, hey, I love being out at Riverbend. I don't want to be on campus. Keep us out there, you know? We're doing great. She was one of the few that had a differing opinion that evening of the students. And because, but they've achieved success out there, and they're just doing fantastic. It kind of bothers me that those two programs are kind of orphaned out there. And if we go to the campus or we go to K-Tech, they're still orphaned. I haven't figured out how to fix that one yet. I really would like none of our programs to be orphaned in one sense or another, so maybe we move them, or however we go, I don't know. But it's working still. Riverbend has a lot of technology in place. We already are linked up to them, so that's not a big issue. And we can do that at K-Tech. That's no big deal either. And in fact, was it Mr. Green that said he'd pony up up to $100,000, I think it was? So that might be a red herring if we're worried about technology and all that out at K-Tech. I think that's a moot point. I think we're going to be as hooked up there as we'd be on Riverbend or on campus. So I think that's a wash. But that is an attractive thing to Riverbend, because it is already there and in place, and we're hooked up to that facility. And that is a facility that we could co-op with. They have some space, some classrooms, and I asked President Dunlap about that, and some folks about what their utilization was, and there are times where those classrooms are available. So again, some things are attractive about Riverbend. And there are a number of things. And Bruce and the guys are out there running that, and then, again, they've been very good to us, the Jacklin folks. So great partnership and just great folks. So I had to put a couple of things in, because I think Riverbend has, to be honest, and the discussion kind of got the short shaft in this, and it's always kind of going to campus versus K-Tech. And I guess I want people to know, we are looking at Riverbend also, and that Riverbend does have some good qualities as a site. A couple of things on K-Tech I just want to touch on, too. I think of the three sites, K-Tech has the potential for the most corporate participation. It's interesting, I've had the opportunity to be with Ron, Trustee Nielsen, and a couple of things recently, and he makes things happen, and he knows people that make things happen. And he knows people that just don't make things happen, but they write checks. And they donate. And I'll tell you, I see K-Tech, and with respect to, shout-out to Judy, beautiful Meyer Health Center, so I know, you know, it happens here on campus, too. I just see a lot of, I see the potential for a lot of corporate participation at K-Tech, and there's some surroundings, and there's properties owned, and I think there's others that come out. I see guys like Jim Tippett at Bayshore, and I just see the passion of the corporate folks. And, you know, K-Tech had all its steel donated. It was about half a million dollars, wasn't it, I think? You know, and I don't know if that's going to happen for us in this context, but I just see a lot of synergy there with the corporate entities at K-Tech, and I think that site lends itself to that to most of the three. So from that perspective, although I think Riverbend, we could still get some out there, too. I think there's some interesting things already out there. U of I does have a presence there, and some of the other companies, high-tech companies out there. One of the things that's been talked about a little bit is the actual location, time and distance. The, you know, was it adjacent to? You know, is it in the boonies? And I thought about it, and Ron said, yeah, I can get to K-Tech in like four minutes. And I thought, how do you do that? He says, well, I go up Seltice, I jump on Hutter, I whip over to Lancaster, and boom, I'm there. And I went, you know, that's pretty true. I went the long way around and met you out there. Wow, I took about 15 more minutes than I needed to. Should have just jumped from my office and gone. The point there is that we have enough major arterials locally, and there may be more in the future, but I can come in on 41, I can come across on Bocal Road, I can come across on Lancaster, I can come up Seltice, I could zip up Hutter. I've got Atlas, I've got, you know... Oh, anyway, the point is, there's a lot of arterials. Lost my thought there on one of the roads, but Ramsey, excuse me.
You're on the wrong road, Ron.
Wrong road. But the point is, there's enough ways to get across, you know, dump off I-90, dump off Highway 95, coming from the north, east, west, south, that K-Tech is not as, it's not as remote as one might think. It's funny, and it's kind of a blessing. Here in North Idaho, if you commute more than about 10, 15 minutes, it's like, my gosh, I just went a long ways. When some people sit in traffic for an hour plus each direction, it's amazing how far you can get in 15 minutes in North Idaho. You know, you can be in the wilderness in 15 minutes. So I don't think that that's that big a deal, honestly. And the roads will be maintained well enough in the inclement weather. I don't think it's an issue. So I guess those are just my thoughts on the three sites. I would suggest to you that I am leaning towards K-Tech. I see Riverbend as a strong second. I do consider the campus to be my third option at this point. And I think that they all have some pros and some cons, but overall, I think, right now, I think some of the concerns we have at K-Tech in particular, I don't think are as significant as we might have thought initially. So anyway, that's some stuff I wanted to share.
My hope that we would have this first round and maybe look at a vote in a half an hour was obviously optimistic, but we're getting close.
Good ideas.
Yes.
Good ideas.
I want to make a few comments. You know, as chairman, many times, the position of chair is to wait, make a vote at the last, and make comments at the last, and let the other members of the board make their comments. And that's, it's a good approach to making sure that we have good, open dialogue between everybody, and I embrace that. But I do want to make a few comments with regard to this fundamental decision we're making about site right now, or discussion we're having about site. I have said before, and I will repeat it, tonight, we are not going to make a bad decision so long as we make a decision. We have actually four sites that are, none of them would be bad. Some in the opinion of some, of each of us, might be better than others, but none of them are going to be a bad site, or we can't do what we need to do. And so from my perspective, I want to, I've tried to take a look at this, and we've heard a lot of reasons why the different sites have attractions, some of the negatives, some of the positives. But we have been reminded of the fact that, as a board, our job is to look out for the students. Our job is here to make sure that we provide whatever assistance we can to the members of our community who want to get an education, to do it in the best way possible. I will add to that, because, as you see in our mission statement, that we are also, our mission calls upon us to support community engagement, lifelong learning, and to the educational needs of not only students, but employers in northern Idaho communities. It's a very broad-based responsibility. And in doing that, we have to look at not just what's going to happen today, but what's going to happen tomorrow. And I don't mean tomorrow, meaning next year. I mean five, six, seven, eight, 10, 15 years. And I think in making this decision, we are going to be setting a pattern for what's going to happen with technical, professional technical, or what I'll call skills-based education for the next several decades at least, and maybe longer than that. In the past, there has been a cultural tension between at the academic community and the, the, I'll call it skills-based educational community. Historically, I think some of the skills have been looked upon as not having, not being as much higher education as the academic. This institution has fought hard to eliminate that distinction. Fought hard because the training and the education of the skills-based students is just as important to our community and our, our state as any, any academic training. So trying to maintain a common respect and regard for both of those methods of education or those, those cohorts of education, I think is important to us. And I, I, I struggle with the concept of if we create a separate technical commu-, culture on a separate technical campus, will we be recreating the tension that we've tried to eliminate over the last few years? I don't know if that'll happen and if it does, we'll deal with it. But that's one of the overriding concerns that I have. I also look at what we do as a college as impacting our entire community, not just in educating the students that come to us, but also in drawing employers into this area. We will create the image of having an educational opportunity, not only to train the people who are here, but to train, but to provide the image to employers who are looking at this area as providing the opportunity to, to fulfill their needs. We are, we are part of a lot of the inquiries that are made in this area about, well, what kind of educational system do you have, both K-12 system as well as the higher education systems. And so what we do is also, will have an impact on our employer attraction and, and I see that as, again, an overriding issue. It is amazing to me in my time on this board to see what I see, I think of as a changing world of education. We are in a changing paradigm with regard to education. It is becoming more and more and more technical. Probably the best example that I have of that recently is the, well, we, we got a grant in order to provide some education in the lumber processing industry. Now, my first thought jumped to the fact that, okay, we're going to be training people how to pull the green chain and do other things that are sort of standard lumber processing activities. But when you look at the program, it's all technical. It's all about running numerical control machines and repairing that stuff. And even some of the very fundamental employments that we have are getting more and more and more technical. And that's going to be our job. That's going to be our challenge is to provide that opportunity and not catch up with it, but to lead it. But to get ahead of it if we can and make sure that we provided the kinds of opportunities that are going to draw employers in. You know, that may, these comments may seem very ethereal, but I look at what we're, the decision we're making here as impacting those areas. And so when I look at the concept of the main campus, I'm, I'm intrigued because I think that will help the cohesiveness, not just of the training, but also the imagery that we send out. But I'm not sure that a separate technical campus is going to be a bad thing. What we have to do is make that decision here today. And you've heard comments from all of the trustees and I think it's been valuable because we are going to have to make a decision about where we're going to go with this. Having said all that, I think what I'd like to do now is see if we can't, are there any, any motions to be made with regard to the site location?
I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Hang, hang on, I got it. Judy?
Oh, sorry.
I think we both are, so let me try mine and we'll see what we learn with that. In your comments, Mr. Chair, and as comments of our fellow board members, I would highlight to you that our higher ed campus has a unique geography really throughout the state of Idaho of having not only North Idaho Community College, but two other institutions of higher learning in close proximity. So even more program integration can and does happen. Both LCSC and U of I provide upper division programs, which provide that opportunity for students access to education for career development and progression. Over the 24 years that I've now been on boards for education in Idaho with NIC, State Board, back on NIC, I've seen many efforts to integrate. And that's a theme that I clearly have and have had from the beginning, integrating academic and professional technical CTE programs. And I would say to my board members, although my mantra has always been programs drive facilities, I also see how proximity can help integrate that delivery of programs. And so I believe the best location for the career technical programs, for student completion and success, and for cost effectiveness for the taxpayers, is the education campus site. And my move, we adopt that site.
So your, your motion is what?
To have the career technical programs here on the North Idaho College Campus.
Is there a second to that motion? I second the motion. Now it's open for discussion. Do we have discussion on her motion?
Yeah, well, if that's what we're going to do is discuss her motion, there's some points for clarification. Her grading system, as she talks about this four points for the main campus and one point for here, as you go down each one of those, it's always looking through a different set of glasses. She talks about the mixing of a 28-year-old and a 17-year-old when you're talking about mixing there. We do, we encourage that today with our, with our three high schools here is dual enrollment. And when it, when a, when a student, if it's a 17-year-old student or a 35-year-old student that gets a certification in, in diesel or auto or welding, that certification is recognized. It's the same curriculum that we teach here at NIC that we teach here at K-Tech. So when you talk about that you would not give it the same level there, I look at that and say, this is, it's a reason for us to be there. We have better access to there. Access to our student service, we talked about that, that you can drive on campus, register one time. This is what they do at diesel, at the, I mean, the welding program today, this is what they do at the outdoor recreation, this is what they do at all of them. Go down, register one day, one and done, go down there. As we look about synergies, we took about equipment, and there's a miss, I've, I've seen this written three times now and I got to stop this. I have a letter, an email that was sent from our executive director to you, Mr. Dunlap, on June 4th stating of the 45 transfers that are going to transfer this year. I've seen it written twice and I heard, heard in this presentation, there's only five programs that have the synergy that transferred. We have 45 students. 95% of these kids got a job, went on to continued education or transferred on to here. That's an incredible statistic. So when you say, well, only five students, that is not a true statement. If you go back to June 4th, to his email. As we look about share of facilities, we have the latest and greatest welding equipment. We have the latest in machining and we have machines like plasma burners and stuff like that that we can share. We don't have to duplicate what you have over there. We can send somebody over and spend a couple of hours doing some, some initial training and understanding of that without having to have the taxpayers pick up another plasma burner at this site. So we can share a lot of that. So when you talk about the best utilization of our equipment, it gives us a four where if it stays on the main campus, gives us a zero. When you start talking about all, all of these, as I look at these objectively about what this is as far as building costs, site locations, that to me, if you give me the chance to evaluate, it's going to be way off the chart against what's there. So when I think about this being on this campus versus at Rathrum and using this grading system, to me, it's not relevant because it's from one person's point of view.
Any other comments? Christie?
Yes, well, I'll tell you.
This is on the motion now.
Yeah. You know, I am a big fan of Judy Meyer. I really am. And I know that Judy, you put a lot of work into this and I know not just the sheet, but the entire topic. I know this and it's painful for me to be on a different page than you. Because I totally, truly admire you. I, I guess I, I just am having difficulty discounting K-Tech to the level that, that it has been discounted, not just by you. And I don't think that you discounted it to.
That's fair.
I, I think you just assessed it, yeah. But it's, it's, for me, it's just ripe with possibilities and I can't get beyond that. And I know that it's, it's a new concept and we're going to have to step out of our comfort zone and be pioneers and go toward a new concept. But I certainly think that we're capable, more than capable, that's what NIC does. We have outreach facilities all over the five northern counties and they don't have the access to the main campus. They have what we can deliver. We've given the best possible experience we can of NIC and they're very successful and we're proud of our outreach centers. So I know we can do this and I'm just so excited about the possibility of working with these three great cities, these three great school districts and North Idaho College to do something brand new. And that's where I'm coming from. And I, I can't, I just can't get away from it. I'd love to support your motion, but I, I just want to see what's out there in the future for us.
Todd? Oh, were you done?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Christie.
I have to agree with Christie and, well, no, Christie and I have agreed a lot recently, actually. I'm just going to articulate a couple of thoughts in addition, or maybe to add on to what she said. And I sound like I'm rebutting Judy here and I, I don't mean to be doing that per se.
It's not me, Todd, it's the concept. And it's okay. I think that's an important discussion we have, is not people, but the issue of what's best for the students. Go for it.
One of the things that I had pointed out earlier with some of our remote facilities and actually then Christie just extended that because she's right. As we've delivered to say the welding site and they come on campus and they initially register and maybe occasionally see a counselor, but I think the counselor with our intrusive counseling can run out to the welding center or to K-Tech or to wherever we're at or whoever we've got there. I really don't think that's a limitation, but extend that further. Yeah, you're right. We're delivering to Bonners Ferry, Sandpoint, you know, Kellogg, and none of them are having the shared campus experience, but yet we're succeeding. I mean, the kids don't even have to leave Sandpoint now to get their AA degree. I mean, that's, that's a great stride that we've had. So there may be a, an individual that never experiences the main campus from NIC, at NIC and yet they get their degree from us up in Sandpoint. So I think we can de-emphasize that issue, to be honest. I, I think we've, and then I look at Cassie and the folks out of aerospace. And Cassie, I didn't want to slight you, I, I didn't want anybody orphaned, but you guys are going to be orphaned. You're up by the airport because you're aerospace and you need to be there and you got your facility. And truthfully, you being away from the campus hasn't diminished your success at all. I mean, you guys are doing fantastic, you know? You guys got like Bert Rattan on your board and you just got another donation of composites, I think, the other day, you know? So, yeah, I, I don't, we don't want to move you, leave you right there. I suspect your kids pretty much live in that building all the time and rarely come back to the campus. And yet I think you guys are succeeding marvelously. So I think it's a model that we've already established and that we've proven that we can be successful with the off-campus sites. We just have to think through it smartly how we do it. So I, I guess that's my thought. I don't, I, I think there's an old paradigm, Ken, you mentioned this, you know, we're, we're pioneering and sometimes we feel a little chained to the campus and it's just a mindset. And yet we have a lot of, we have a lot of dreams for the campus and Christie touched on that, for joint use facilities and our academic transfer programs and, you know, and right now we look at the pad sites and what we've done and we'd have to tear a bunch of stuff up and, and I think I'd like to keep those for the future. And when I asked President Dunlap, I said, is there going to be a rassle for the space? But everybody's already excited. Whatever gets vacated, it already is going to get claimed, you know? Whenever we move, we're going to fill the space and, and so it's going to be very efficient and, I don't know. I, I think, I think we can move off-campus and be okay.
Any other discussion, Ron?
No, I just was, if we're done with discussion, I'm ready to call for a motion.
Call a question?
Call a question.
All right. All right, so we had the question called and the motion, which has been seconded, is that the CTE facility should be built on the main campus. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Normally I get a chance to break a tie, but there's no tie here. But I think it would be inappropriate for me not to say something about my position on this. And I, I want to tell everybody that as I said before, the only bad decision tonight's going to be no decision. And I would, I would vote for every one of these facilities if I, if it brought the majority of the board together. So although I, I really like the idea of the main campus, the fact that it's not going to be on the main campus because there aren't the votes for it, we'll move on to the next motion. Ron?
Mr. Chairman, as you pointed out, times are changing. We've just seen three years of reduction in academic attendance here. While in the middle of this, we've seen growth in our career in technical education. So we don't have to guess what the future is, is this is an indication of where this is going. Second of all is that we have opportunities with, we're losing to Spokane, we're losing to competitors, and this is an opportunity for us to grow. I believe that we get out there, develop its own synergy out on that campus, that we're going to see growth that we never saw before. And so we can build it cheaper out there and I believe that we have to stop spending our taxpayers' money. So my motion is very simple. It's a three-part motion and number one is the site selection be K-Tech. Don't call it Lancaster, call it K-Tech site. Number two is we limit the cost of this facility to $15 million, which we believe is estimated about 100,000 square feet, which is about half again the size of K-Tech. And that the funding source for that will be using the first $10 million, whether it be the forgone taxes, which are already in reserve, and that the last $5 million will also be used for forgone and that we need to review the financing options. So that is my proposal. Site, K-Tech, $15 million in cost, using forgone taxes and that for us to later on look at the financing options and come up with a solution.
That's your motion and I'm not going to change it, but I would ask that you consider, let's address the site only for a motion and then we'll move right on to the other issues. That gives everybody an opportunity to discuss those items which we haven't discussed yet.
That's my, that's my motion.
Is there a second?
For discussion, I'll second that motion.
Okay. Open for discussion then. Anybody want to discuss it?
Sure, if I may. The only thing that I think, Ron, the concern with that, with that tire motion is that we haven't had a chance to talk about the size and so we're going to have to have that discussion. And we haven't decided, you did allude to the financing would be kind of decided later, but you did say all of the revenue that we currently have. And so I think you'll get some pushback. If it's that we work on the financing, I, I can totally support that. So I, I guess I would just look for some modifications of that motion.
Todd?
Now, Ron, you mentioned 15 million and you mentioned 100,000 square feet. Now that's under the premise that we're looking at about $150 a square foot, correct? Because that's a kind of a number that we've heard and seen and that was supposed to be inclusive of both hard and soft costs, correct?
That according to the, the people who have looked at this, they could think they can do this all in, hard and soft costs for less than the 150. So that's where we're with contingencies, whatever. We think that if we set a budget at 15, we think we can build 100,000 square feet. Maybe it's 95, maybe it's 105.
Are we, are we limited to just talking to each other? Because I mean, to be honest, I got a guy like Dean Hagenson sitting there and he built K-Tech. He's one of the leading guys in this area with CNI. And my understanding is hopefully you've been engaged in some of the conversations and those are numbers that sound real.
Todd, I think the agreement amongst the board members were that we were going to have a discussion amongst us and we were not going to call upon people in the audience for additional comment. Because if we open that up, there may be a lot of people that want to ask questions of people who may not even be here. So let's stick to a discussion between us.
Okay. Well, then I'm going to take 150 as a number that we're working with then. Okay.
Sure. Is there any more discussion about that? Okay.
Well, oh, go ahead, Judy.
No, I have the same concerns Christie does. I would prefer to discuss the motion in sections because I think it's no surprise to use all our forgone doesn't make sense to me, but that's a different aspect of, of your motion that I would ask you to, to think about again. I did bring along some financial planning that worked on today about how much can we do with the sources we have now. I'd like to share that with the board as well because I think that needs to come back to us for another round of, of discussion that is separate from the site location.
Any more discussion? The reason I suggested, Ron, that you might want to amend your motion is what we're going to have to do is we vote on the motion as you made it and as it's been seconded. If it's not voted on by three people, then it's defeated. And then we have to go back in and do something else. Now, maybe we can do it that way and the second motion would be on, you know, to take it piecemeal. I don't, it's up to you as, because it's your motion. I don't, it's up to you, because it's your motion. But if there's no more discussion on this, I'm going to call for a vote on your motion.
Well, let me clarify that, Mr. Chairman, is that the, definitely, the site location is what we've been discussing about. And now we start talking about the size of the facilities. The $35 million that was the, the $76 million was out of questions. We, as a board, decided that $35 million, $30 million was not palatable. And as we did with K-Tech, we can build what we need to do and have some future sites for future growth, and we can do that. So if we do not put a stake in the sand and say that we have to be able to control this and give us a number that there, and that's why the 15 million. We have, by the time that this comes to breaking ground, we will have $10 million of foregone taxes that was collected for this use. Then what we do in future to accumulate for this $5, $5 million, I'm open to anything. But I think that we have to take the initial first $10 million that we have set aside for that and put it towards this project. Because if we don't, then if we have to go to a bond, we have to go to our taxpayers, do whatever, they're going to look to us and say, where, where is this money coming from? And I think that we have an opportunity to fund this without having to raise one penny to our taxpayers, be able to have some money in reserve for future joint-use sites to be able to go forward. But I think that if we don't take it and commit to this at this point, I think it's going to get more complicated in the future. So I would prefer that we leave it as it was stated.
Okay. Any more discussion? All right. I want to try and phrase the motion to make sure that it's clear to everybody. If I misstate it, I want you to correct me. The motion is that the site be, or the CTE facilities be located at the K-Tech location on the Rastone Prairie, that the amount authorized be $15 million, and that it be funded in the first $10 million from the capital, our capital improvement fund, and that the remaining $5 million be funded from some undetermined source in the future. Do I have that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that was seconded. Okay. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
I want to ask questions, but I can't. I'm trying to remember what our exact balance is in our capital fund right now, and I want to remind myself what our annual amount that we're adding to that, because it just increased in an increment.
We're roughly $8 million now, and by the time that we would break ground on this, we'd have the $10 million to cover the first portion of that.
About 2.6 a year. So do you want to?
I'm going to, I'm going to vote for it.
I'm opposed. So the motion is defeated. Now, we need another motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Kristi?
I'd like to make a motion, after all of our discussion, that we put the CTE campus on the K-Tech site.
Okay. Is there a second for that?
Second.
I'm surprised at that.
We wait till you hear the next one.
Any discussion? No discussion? I'll have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
And again, I'm not called upon to vote, because there's not a tie. But I think these things are important enough that I would vote for this. And again, I think that, from our perspective, this institution has to move forward to solve our CTE facilities problem. And that's my ultimate goal. So, your motion passes. The CTE facilities will be located at the K-Tech real estate that we, that NIC presently owns. Okay. Now, are there any other motions to be made with regard to how we fund? Let's first talk about the amount of money we want to authorize to build the facility needs at this time. Judy?
Mr. Chair, I worked on the, another chart about the sources. I'd like to share this, too, because I think that'll help clarify just what you were thinking about. Where, if you look at this, the second, this is as of '14 going out to '18, and the capital reserve for facilities that you were just asking about, what we have and where we're headed. The idea of tax anticipation note, Ron, you were mentioning other ways to fund the remaining amount. Balance at the period end, you see there, decision by the boards, program revisions. So with Dave Teeter's analysis that right now there's $10 million, we have some soft design costs in there potentially. Total cash required, I think, in this case, I was looking at 11 million. If we do bond financing, there's going to be more attorney's fees. I think, Todd, you mentioned that last time, underwriting fees, takes 400,000 or so. Whatever the number is, takes away from money we could be spending on our projects. So I would suggest that even some of the facility equipment can be expanded or added to later. But in the beginning, I would rather us not use all of our reserves, because I think there may be other things that come along. And so as part of our discussion in the next motion, I would like this number, these numbers in front of my fellow board members.
Were you, were you going to make a motion, or was that just?
No, this was information at this moment, and I could go to or make a motion, but Ron was headed there.
Okay, well, Todd, did you want a motion, or do you have a question? Well, you can't remember it, that's all right.
Well, no, I had two different things, but I'm just going to, I'm going to keep listening for a minute.
I, I have a problem with this capital reserve for facilities. This is the $8 million we have. You're saying you're only going to take a half of that money that we reserve to go toward?
First and second half taxes.
Let me ask, hopefully to keep this in some kind of an orderly form that we can digest in pieces, that we look at, what is the amount of money that we want to authorize the administration to spend in resolving the professional technical issues that we have presently? What's the amount of money? And then the next question would be, where do, where do we get the money?
Okay, now, that comes back to what I was thinking, or questioning. As we're thinking about size, and Ron threw out a number of 100,000 square feet, $150 per square foot, $15 million. In our mind, is that accommodating three programs, five programs, or seven programs? Because we've shown this as a, ideally, a seven-program migration, but we've shown it as a phased approach with a 3-2-2 build-out. So, Ron, when you talk about the 100,000 square feet, what are you envisioning at that size? Is that a three, a five, or a seven-program migration from the other locations?
I guess I don't understand the question. So when I look at the, the number that we talked about, which is a $15 million, which is half again more than we paid at K-Tech, because we're going to put more square footage on the ground, and we need some flexibility, that talking with some of the people that have the expertise in this, they gave us an estimated cost. And so I think that we need to, to put together a proposal with something that is palatable and digestible for our taxpayers. Instead of the $67 million here, the $34 million here, we put a stake in the sand, and we say, this is going to be a $15 million complex, and we're going to pay with it, with the money that we have coming in today.
What programs does that accommodate?
That will accommodate all of them.
Yeah, let me suggest that ultimately, how the administration uses this money to solve the problems is something we should leave to them, because they may be able to solve five programs with it. They may only solve three. We've had proposals for three stages of three programs. I think what we're authorizing is an amount of money and saying, okay, do the best you can with this to solve as many problems as you can. And hopefully, that's why we're looking at a dollar value that we're comfortable in authorizing the administration to utilize to solve all of the problems that they can solve.
Mr. Chair? I'm sorry, I'm just going to have to disagree with you just a little bit on that.
Never apologize for that.
Okay. I certainly agree that the administration should implement the dollars. However, I think if we didn't give some guidance, that you need to serve this many programs with this much money, we'd be looking at three programs possibly. So we'd have Phase 1 for $15 million, and that's just, that's not reasonable. We'd have, we'd have two more phases and possibly $15 million for each phase, spend way more money than this board ever intended. So I would rather focus on square footage and a dollar amount, with the understanding that we, our expectations is you will ser, you will serve a certain amount of programs. I don't, I don't want to leave it open to interpretation.
I agree with Kristi.
That's why I was asking my question.
We don't have, we don't have a motion on the floor yet. You know, we're talking in generality. So the next step is going to be for somebody to propose a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
That addresses the amount, yes.
Call for a question?
There's no question.
Okay, well, I'm going, I'm going to make a motion, then. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to say is, that we should authorize to build a structure on the K-Tech site not to exceed $15 million.
Okay.
To accommodate five programs?
It should accommodate all of our?
Seven. Okay, the seven that were identified with the highest synergy.
Okay. And Kristi?
Excuse me, Judy. In this discussion, wait, this is a motion. You probably need a second for that, don't you?
Yes.
I'll make that second.
Then in the discussion phase, I'm trying to think through the not to exceed is to cover the seven programs that we've described here. But I believe the list that we were given had, in, in the whole CTE program, like 22 other programs? This was the seven critical ones. So I want to be sure we think through, what are we going to do with the other 22, or whatever's on the list? This is not in isolation. And I don't have an answer to that, but I know, as we've been thinking along for where we put it and how we fund it, that this is not just an isolated portion of the full need, much of which, I think, may be backfilled, or if we're on campus, you could co-locate and exchange classroom facilities as needed. So when we get out to K-Tech, I think that's going to be part of our challenge, will be, whatever we build, the, all the services we can provide there, which may be separate from the ones we have on campus, because we don't have enough facilities to do it all.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And I would like to suggest that we may not be able to fit the, all seven programs. So I'd like to give a little wiggle room to, to whatever's vacated on campus that, that could certainly be looked at.
Should we turn off some leases?
Yeah. The idea is to serve the seven programs, which means we say, I believe, 60,000 square feet than what was proposed to us. And so I guess we need to somehow make it clear that we want you to, to serve all these programs with this amount of money, but understand there has to be some flexibility. How do you do that in a motion?
Well, the way the, the motion that it reads right now, as I've written it down, and it has been seconded, is that the authority is not to exceed $15 million to solve all seven programs. And we need to be definitive, I think, about those programs. And as I've written them down, that's welding, machining, millwright, automotive repair, diesel, collision, and OPRV. Do I have that right? All right. So if you pass this motion, that means they have to use this $15 million to solve all of those problems. And is there any more discussion on that?
Just that, I, I think that it should be understood, there is flexibility for whatever moves off-campus. If one of these programs had to be, stay on-campus, that's the flexibility.
Let me ask you to consider also the fact that there may be, maybe, I mean, there's been some discussion about OPRV is under evaluation now, as to whether or not we even continue it. The, when we looked at this program initially, we looked at these seven programs. And when the price tag came in at $32 million plus, everybody took a look at it and said, we just don't think we can justify asking the voters to support that now if we go for a bond issue on that. And so the administration went back and said, okay, we could do it in three stages. We could do it, but still, it was the $32 million to, to address all of those programs. And now we're saying $15 million to address all of those programs. It may well be that those programs can be addressed with a $15 million. It may be that they can be addressed with less than that. I don't know. But I thought that the three important ones that we wanted to handle were welding, machining, and millwright, with the idea that, once we handled the machining and millwright relocation, the auto and the diesel, and the collision, may well be able to utilize some of the space that's on-campus. So I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of the fact, we don't want to hamstring the administration on, on getting these problems solved. It doesn't mean they all have to move out to K-Tech, but that's, maybe it does. I mean, but that's the way I read the motion, because the motion was to do this at K-Tech. That was your motion.
Exactly.
And so what we're doing is, we're telling the administration, they have to do all of these programs out at K-Tech. And we have to do them for $15 million. And if I've got that wrong, tell me, but that's the way.
For, for clarifications, Mr. Chairman, is that we have nine programs currently in 62,000 square feet with an administrative office and whatever. So we're talking half again as much money, half again as much square footage on the same startup that we have there. All indications are, as we can get all seven of these in half again as much square footage, we're running nine today. And that we will not build, I would assume, we're not going to build a 16,000-square-foot student service center out there, because we think that we need to duplicate that. So I think that we should be focused on getting these seven programs into this, which we estimate is somewhere in the neighborhood of 100,000 square feet. I think that should be easily done.
Mr. Chair? Could I ask Dr. Dunlap for some feedback? Knowing the direction we're going, we'd like to see all seven programs addressed at this facility. Can you give us your feedback?
Let me, let me.
Can't have his feedback.
Well, no. We can do anything that the board wants to do. We really can. Yeah. I just, he asked him, ask a question.
I'm sorry, Todd.
No, no, no. Earlier, a member of, of Dean Hagenson and I suggested to him that the board had decided not to.
Oh.
Not to ask questions. Now, if the board collectively says, yes, we want to ask Dr. Dunlap that, we'll do it, because that's what the board wants to do.
I see.
But I, I want to make sure that the ground rules stay the same for everybody.
Okay.
I'm certainly fine if she wants to ask a question. If anybody, everybody else is okay with that.
Is everybody else okay with that?
Sure.
Okay, if you ask a question, Joe, I'm asking one of Dean Hagenson.
Read on, Joe. He's our president.
All right, go ahead.
Dr. Dunlap? I, you can hear the direction the board's going, and our expectation of, we want you to fit all seven programs with the highest need into the $15 million, approximately 100,000 square feet. What's your feedback on that?
We will make every effort to accommodate all seven programs at the location selected with the budget given. But what we need to do is look at what the equipment requirements are and what the program requirements are, to make sure that that will fit in there. If it doesn't all fit in there, then there may be a program, just by way of example, that remains in Headland, but that would give us greater capacity to expand that program in the Headland area. So for example, if you look at our automotive or diesel program, we have a need for a dynamometer, we have a need for engine rooms, excuse me. And we need to be able to have those to support that curriculum. If we can put all seven programs in the 100,000 square feet, then we'll do that. But if we can't do that, and we, it causes concern about whether we can meet the programmatic needs, then Headland provides some expansion opportunity as well.
Ron, Todd?
Are you, I'm sorry, are you done?
Yep.
I like how that sounds, and I'll give two thoughts to that. One is, we could prioritize the seven programs, so we'd know which would be maybe the lowest-hanging fruit, and which ones would maybe be the less behind if we had to. But I caution us, and this is actually a compliment to our, our people here, because I don't want any easy outs on this. What I want to do is, I want to stretch our people, and I want them to reach, to do the most amazing thing that we can do with the amount of money and the square footage. And I think if we give them a task, that they're going to rise to the challenge. So I want to, I want to challenge them and set the bar really high, because I think we're going to reach it. So I, I don't want us to, to short-change their ability to make this happen. And so I don't want any easy outs on this. And we can have a contingency, but I want to, I want to push our people. have a contingency, but I wanna, I wanna push our people. I think they're gonna surprise us. And I think, I know I see Ron shaking his head. He keeps telling me, "We're gonna do, we're gonna do more than everybody expects." And the group working on this project are gonna do more than everybody expects, I think, and maybe for less. I mean, I don't know if it's less than fifteen million, but we're less than what you'd think. So, that's a challenge out there.
Judy?
Um, thank you, Mr. President, for being willing to rally to what we're thinking here. It seems to me that we're not leaving the college folk enough leeway when we say to them, "They have to take all the programs and put them in one building," which is what I'm, think I'm hearing this motion say. And that, I don't think that's good management on our part as a board. That's what our team, our staff does. What we need to do is set an amount of money they have to use in whatever way they can to meet the needs of whatever programs they deem to be the most critical. I suspect as we move along, program enrollment may change, right? Should things are growing and changing. That, we've identified one program we're not sure about now, and so, where it should go, I think we learned through the consultant study, that some programs were more synergistic together, and maybe they need to be back on campus, 'cause there was already facilities that are built in the Headland Building that can do that. I don't know, and I don't need to. I do need to know the amount of money and where it's gonna come from, 'cause that does cause me heartburn as a, as part of our budgeting responsibility, fiduciary responsibility, uh, in choosing the amount. We've already determined the site. So, if we're gonna choose an amount, then I would like to have it be, uh, just that, the amount. And, um, I think we'll have enough input to the president along the way that some of these other ideas, you'll have the benefit of our ideas without putting it in the motion fashion.
Any other, Judy?
Um, Mr. Chair, I guess my only fear is somehow, again, we end up with only three programs served. And I don't mean that as if it would be purposeful. I don't. I mean that, if we don't give clear direction, then, then that's where we could end up, and then we'd be phasing in, which I am not interested in phasing anything. I don't want to come back two years from now and talk about fifteen million more dollars. So, I am kind of at a loss on how we get to where we want to go. I, I, I want to give some clear direction to the administration with some flexibility.
Uh, let me, um, the motion right now is, and again, I want you to correct me if I've got this wrong. Um, I, I, I want to remind myself as well as everybody else what the motion is. Correct me if I'm wrong. Um, the motion is, uh, to grant authority, uh, not to exceed fifteen million dollars, um, for, and, and, for a location at K-Tech to solve all seven programs, which include welding, machining, milrite, auto mechanics, diesel, collision, and OPRV. That's the motion. Um, I have a concern much similar to Judy and Christie's, in that I, I think we could hamstring, um, the effective use of that money and the effective solution of the problems if we give, uh, uh, we require that all of these programs be immediately resolved by relocation to K-Tech. I probably could support a motion that said that the author- authorization not to exceed fifteen million dollars to solve all seven programs, giving priority to location at K-Tech were feasible, because I think that would be the incentive to say, "Solve these at K-Tech were feasible," but also would not require that if there's, um, a, a better way to solve it, um, now, that the administration has that flexibility. Is there any other discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I, I think I would, um, I don't know if the motion that Ron made, you said "to solve." I didn't, I thought I heard "to host" seven programs, not to solve.
Let's ask Ron.
Ron, what was your...
Yeah, I mean, let's go back, but the way it comes back around again is, nine programs today and sixty-two. The experts and the builders think that we can get everything that we need under one roof in approximately a hundred thousand square feet that will host all seven facilities, and I think that should be our goal, to, to not to have some gray area where we don't know how many square feet. We, we, if, if you have a, if you have X number of dollars to build a house, you know kind of what you want, you will back into that, and you'll build it for exactly what you have. If we leave it, let's just do the best we can. I think we need to limit this to this fifteen million dollars to host these seven facilities. And if there is something that comes out of there, then we will have to make some concessions. But we remember, as we have Diesel Tech and Collision, and them are all cur- currently functioning, they're gonna want to be out on this campus. And so, there will be an incentive for everybody to get all these seven facilities out on the same campus at the same time.
Uh, we can use the word "host" or "locate," I don't care which, but it would be a thought- authorization, and we're gonna have a specific motion we're voting on, so everybody's clear on this. So, the authorization not to exceed fifteen million dollars, uh, to locate all seven facilities at K-Tech. And then, we list the facilities, so we know what they are, the programs, excuse me.
Todd's trying to get you.
Yes, Todd?
Mr. Chair, if we make a motion now, and...
There is a motion pending.
This is it.
Understand, we make a motion now, we vote on it, and say we pass it, there's nothing to preclude us from down the road at some point, based on additional information and how everything proceeds over the next six, nine, twelve months, that we could not possibly amend that if we were concerned. In other words, if we set all seven programs right now, and we get to a spot where they just say, "It's absolutely economically infeasible, we've done everything we can, we've reached for the stars, and we've got five programs out there, and that's all we can do," that we could amend, correct?
Yes, we can. We can do any of those things.
And I'd rather start out with the highest bar, understanding that if, if there's compelling evidence that we need to adjust that, that we can.
I could support that.
I can support that.
And the highest bar that you're talking about...
It's the seven programs.
Again, I want to be, I want to be clear on the language, all right? The highest bar is the pending motion, then?
Yes, sir.
Highest bar is fifteen million. Uh, the second highest is seven, um, seven...
Programs.
CTE programs.
Judy?
And that, that's where I feel like we're not, we're, we want to set policy about the amount. I believe we should not be giving direction on the specific programs. I think we still have some facilities on campus that are entirely adequate, in my understanding, for some of the PTE programs that we're doing. And, you know, primarily the Headland Building, but the special equipment and the design that's already there. It seems to me, if we designate these programs to all be at one specific site, we're not capitalizing on facilities we already have on campus. Uh, and I, I have mixed emotions about that, because I understand the synergism of all being together. And it may turn out that we, we do need to essentially abandon Headland, because the equipment there can do the job, but it can't for all the programs. And that's why I, I'm not for designating, uh, the programs. I think the administration has already told us, and we know they'll deal with whatever the programs are that need the most attention right now in the most effective way they can. And it may be that some of that's done on Headland, and some of it's done elsewhere, and we can fit in more than seven. And I'd like to leave the administration the option to do that, manage that.
Ron?
There's a motion on the floor. I call for the question again, and, and call for a roll call.
Go ahead. Could somebody call for the question, so it's time for a vote? All in favor, I'm gonna repeat the motion, so that you know what it is. All right? Motion is to authorize, um, the administration, uh, to, uh, expend, not to exceed fifteen million dollars to locate all seven programs at K-Tech. And the programs are welding, machining, milrite, auto mechanics, diesel, collision, and OPRV. Uh... That's, that's the motion, and the question's been called. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
And again, I would vote against that. Again, I'm sort of abandoning my traditional role of not voting except to break a tie. Um, but I think that the public needs to know exactly how all of the trustees are, are, positions they've taken. So, I would vote to oppose the motion. All right, the motion passed.
Yes. Ron, you're gonna shoot me here, but is it, I would like to consider a possible adjustment to the motion we just passed. And, and let me just finish the thought, because Judy said, "Hey, what if they want to throw nine out there?" I think we leave everything as it is, but we say, "Minimum of the seven identified." I mean, do we need to put any language on it that allows them to go past the seven? Or are we okay at that point?
Your, your discussion with Ron is, is fine, but if we're gonna move forward with it, then you need to fashion a motion, so we know what we're talking about.
I was just wanting a general discuss for a second, I'm sorry. Uh, just, I'm, I'm talking to my other four board members. Do you see, 'cause Judy raised a point that I think is valid, that if we get really excited, and we do a great job, and we come in under budget, and we got all that space, and someone goes, "Why do we stop at this seven? We could add this eighth or ninth program." With the motion we just passed, does that limit them? I don't see it limiting them going past the seven. We basically are saying at least those seven, correct?
I don't think so. I think...
I don't, yeah. I think that our administration knows full well, they can come back to this board at any time and, and, and discuss with us what, any issues they're dealing with with the last motion we just passed.
Same way, we could say, if it ended up being five or six, for some reason, we could say it could be eight or nine. Okay. Just want to be clear on that.
Okay. So, we've had now two motions passed, one locating the facility at the K-Tech property owned by NIC, um, one authorizing, um, funds in the amount not to exceed fifteen million dollars, and the, uh, I think it's the last item, but it may not be. But one item I think we should need to consider is the authorization of where that money's gonna come from. And so, if there's a motion, um...
Right here. Ron? Mr. Chairman, I would like to, uh, put a motion on the floor that we look for sources for this funding, but we want to start in the reserve that we currently have there. According to this payment schedule, is that we're gonna go back, and we're gonna give back, um, a large portion of these foregone taxes. I believe that that foregone taxes was collected for the purpose of building buildings. This is our number one, uh, cause that we have, and we've always said this, so let's go ahead and let's put this eight point five, what is it, Sarah? Is it eight point five? What's it, was it eight?
You asking questions?
No, and I'm just, she, she, let, let's see, the eight, I think it's eight-five, give or take some change. And by the time that this is built, we'll have ten million. I would like to see us take the first ten million from there, and then explore, so the first ten million comes out of our foregone taxes, and then explore other options of how we can do it. And there's three or four creative options, when we're only gonna collect the last five million dollars. I would like us to, to commit that we're going to take the first ten million out of our foregone taxes, and then the rest of this, we will look at alternative.
Okay. Uh, again, I have to have a motion that is...
Okay.
I think, uh, concise and directive in your, your motion is to take ten million from the Capital Reserve account. Uh, I'm not sure that I understand the second part.
Oh, and, and then, then we will move on with, uh, how we would fund the remaining balance, which a portion of that could be foregone, but we want to back, build that reserve back up when it comes to Capital Reserve facilities for future growth.
Again, for the purposes of the motion, um, you want to leave undetermined how we raise the rest of the money?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Exploring options.
Because we don't know what all of our options are for this.
All right, is there a second for that?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay. Discussion? Is there any discussion on it?
Yes, sir, may I? Um, well, this is where we, we differ. Um, I, I understand Ron wants to get this done, and we have the foregone revenue stream. I understand that, but I also know what we've been through just in this past year with budget issues. And I, I'm really, um, weary of any idea of tying up every dime we have. This money was collected, the Capital Improvement Fund, you're correct, it was collected for facilities, and CTE is our number one facility. I agree with all of that. But I also know that we have many facilities needs moving into the future, and whether it be a joint use, which we would love to do someday, or, um, some kind of catastrophe on campus. We just have no other revenue stream. And so, I am very hesitant to tie up every dime for five to seven years, and then not know how we're going to go get the other five million. I'd like to come back and have, um, specific dialogue at a later date on financing, with a lot of information brought to the board.
Wait.
One of the things that will be a factor, which we're not having a report on tonight, is enrollment and how we're doing because of some costs that may come along. Now, that doesn't affect Capital Reserve per se, but if we're really short, and something comes along that we haven't figured on, our only source of revenue will be the bank account called Capital Reserve. And so, I would say to my fellow board members, that amount is, is too heavy at ten million. Uh, we've told the administration what their target is, and we're not sure what, what the timeline is, so I think, uh, can, reviewing that some more for the amount. And then, as you suggested, Ron, if we find we've, we're comfortable with a certain amount out of the current budget, and enrollment gives us some cushion, we can come back and fill in with various options, tax increment being one. Bond is not my favorite, and at this point, hopefully, we don't need to. But those are some other options we have.
Listening to my three fellow trustees down there, the thought does occur to me that we can have some sort of a compromise. I, I know Ron wants to commit a, a dollar amount right now. Uh, I'm okay with that, but I, I'm thinking we might do it a little differently. And this also, hopefully, speaks to Christie and Judy's concerns. I, I think that we, uh, what we do now is we commit some amount of funds, limited number, that says, "Let's go forward, let's get the plan going, let's get it moving, let's get us ready to start moving dirt," whatever it takes, 'cause there's a process for the permitting and all the stuff. So, I think we can commit, hopefully, some funds now, whatever that looks like, even if it's just a couple hundred thousand dollars, but whatever, to get the process rolling. We know we can get to the fifte- I, I say "we know." I think we're confident we can get to the fifteen million, and we have some different avenues to do that. So, I think we need to commit a, a, a sum, a modest sum, to get the ball rolling. And then, I, I think we come back and we address the financing a little, in a little more detail, and, and nail down what we're comfortable with, with the actual amount out, out of our reserves, and, and projected how we slice off in the future of those foregone taxes, and then if we have to do some sort of other financing. Um, I, I, I offer that as, in discussion, as maybe a new motion after this one's discussed, as a compromise, that we can at least get the ball running. I, I want to see these guys get moving right now. We're on a timeline, and we gotta put welding somewhere soon.
Excuse me, Ron?
Uh, and I, maybe I didn't state that very well. Make sure I understood, Christie, is we have, we will have ten million dollars by next year. That'll be before this building's ever done. So, we, we don't have to spend that ten million until this thing is basically completed. Then, at that point, we collect two point six million dollars a year for five years. We will create another thirteen million dollars. We only have to pay off this five million dollars, which will leave us eight million dollars for joint-use facilities and doing some things that we need to do to make some, uh, improvements here. But the ten million dollars that we have is basically, it's sitting in an account doing nothing. We've made the improvements on, uh, the site, the roundabouts and the highways, that's the only money that this is, came out of there for. Now, we're just saying is, let's go ahead and take this one lump that we have. And with that, now we only have a balance of another five million dollars to pay over. We could probably look at some institution that would let us borrow against these taxes, which is, if we collect two point six, and we only have to use, um, less than a million dollars a year, if that's the number, we have one point five surplus every single year for the next five years, and we accumulate another eight million dollars. I just don't want us to not take this ten million dollars that we have that's been set aside for this, and not lump it in, because we're gonna, we're gonna be forced to go in and look at long-term financing. We talked about thirty years, twenty-year bonds. Uh, we want to get this to five and done, and let's get it over with. Like, K-Tech was two and done. That was what we told the people. Two years, we're done, we're over, and now it's over. I want to, like, to cut this time frame out, that we're not stretching this out over a ten or fifteen, twenty-year bond.
Mr. Chair? I'm sorry.
Hang on.
Yes. Sorry. Ron, I, I hear what you're saying, but remember, we can't do a contract for over twelve months. So, we'd either have to do it through the conduit of the foundation, and then we'd, there's some different ways we'd have to think about that, unless we went out and got a bond, 'cause we can only finance for a certain period of time. So, if we hit the first ten million, even if we have to go more than a couple, three, we're already past our statutory authority, if I understand that right. So, we have to be careful of that. It's not like we can just slice off a million dollars for five years, and we get there. We're not allowed to do that contractually. So, unless we incorporate it somehow under the foundation, now, we do have a letter from John Young, and I know that Steve's gonna be our new president for the foundation here shortly, and I'm hopeful that that letter was coordinated with Steve, and he's on the same page with John. I don't, I don't know, I'm hoping. Um, so, but to do what you're suggesting, uh, I'm not saying it's a bad thing at all, but we would have to coordinate that and think about how that would look, even try to do it out of pocket. If we extend past another year, then we'd have to have the money up front, and we'd have to pay it.
I think that, Todd, and that's where I'm saying, is we don't know. What, the, you, what's that terminology?
Judicial confirmation.
Judicial confirmation shows that we have... Judicial confirmation shows that we have, we have this source of money coming in that we've been putting under reserve and we go to them and saying, we need $5 million that we will fund through there, that we could probably use a judicial confirmation there and not have to go and stretch this thing out over any more than a five-year window.
Yeah, let me suggest that the use of judicial confirmation is not as you suggested. That's going to require a burden of proof that we show that there's an emergency and a critical need. And I'm not sure all of the indicia that the courts are going to require, but it is not as simple as saying we have the money coming in and therefore we could pay off the bond in a short period of time. I wish it was that simple, quite frankly. The judicial confirmation is a stopgap when generally a vote fails and that courts would require a burden of proof probably more than we could supply if we've already found a way to build most of the facility. So the judicial confirmation is an opportunity for us if other methods failed, but I wouldn't look upon it as a first-tier solution. Christie?
Mr. Chair, I appreciate that. You being a lawyer, I'm certain, I don't, I don't discount your opinion, but I, what I would like to do is I really think we need a, some time for information to come back for us on just the financing portion of this. And I'd like judicial confirmation to be thoroughly researched because it very, very well may be a really good possibility for us. I do think we can prove it's critical. We have programs where our students are at risk for safety issues. And so I think we can prove that portion, but we won't know unless we get some counsel on that. Ron, I don't know where the window of time is that we go with no money in the bank if we take the entire, right now, we only have 8.6.
That's it?
And so we have to wait another year to get to the 10. And so I don't know how long we would go with zero dollars available to all the other program needs, and that's my fear. It isn't that I want to string this out. I'm not interested in a bond either. I'd rather we just finance this and do what we can. So what I would really like to do, I'd love to support your motion, but I really want to dig into the financing with some more education on it provided by bond counsel again and by our administration and legal counsel.
Mr. Chairman? I agree with you, Christie.
Let Judy have a chance here.
Go ahead.
The same concept could be that, that our administration will have a better handle on what they can do with the 15 million, which would help us understand the costs and where they can come from and the timeline in which they occur. And so maybe for our board purposes tonight, we can say that in August, I'm sure you'll be very busy between now and then, we hear more from our staff on what it's really like now that they know what, where the site is and the amount and the programs we're asking them to focus on. And they can come back then to give us some reassurances to the progression for money needed. And August would be, if it's reasonable to ask for staff to do, would make me more comfortable than voting for it now.
Okay. What we have, go ahead, Ron.
Well, just, man, I agree with Christie is that we need to understand, and I think that's where we tried to get to before, is that there is some funding options that change when you go from a $76 million to a $35 million. Now we're talking about a 15 million when we have $10 million in reserve. We have 8.5 million in reserve, but we already collected another 10. So we've collected $18.5 million today on this property and have had the self-discipline not to spend on anything else. All I'm suggesting is to make this done, let's get this done. And then we look at all the options that we can do to stretch this out and free up some of this capital down the road. But my biggest concern would be is if we go and say, okay, we're going to take a portion of this and then we're going to find out that we do not have any other financing options that force us to have to go out and jump a different, more difficult hurdle, I think. So that's, that's my point.
Hang on a minute. Before somebody calls the question, I want to have an opportunity to at least respond to what some of the things we're talking about. And Todd, then I'm going to call upon you.
Yes, sir.
The motion is that we take 10 million from the capital reserve and determine, later determine how to raise the rest of the money. I mean, that's essentially the, the motion and it's been seconded. I have a couple of concerns about that. The indefineness of later determine how we're going to raise the rest of the money, I think, does not really move anything ahead. My greatest fear is we're going to end this meeting tonight and not know how to move ahead tomorrow. And so I have a concern about that indefineness, about how we're going to determine that in the future. But my greatest fear, I suspect, is to just take, as Christie's already mentioned, the money out of the capital reserve and deplete the capital reserve to nothing when we can do something else and we have other options. So I think I would vote against this, but I think that, you know, and Todd had mentioned this earlier, and I think there's been discussions about this in the past, that if we can at least authorize the administration to take $1 million or...
Just as a point of clarification, the budget that you recently approved for next year includes a half a million dollars from the capital reserve to proceed with the planning and pre-design for this project regardless of where it is located. So we have the budget and the authority to move forward, at least with that next planning piece.
So if there's money to move forward tomorrow, right? With the planning and that sort of thing and the board is, members, some of them as the board are uncomfortable with how we definitively describe our authorization for how we fund this, then maybe we should put this question off till August and hopefully have a, at that meeting, if we need additional information, a definitive presentation and a vote on how we, how we actually, where we get the money from. Again, my fear is that, I don't know, I don't know how we're, how we can describe how we're going to raise this money in the future and say, we're going to take 10 million from the capital reserve right now. I'm not sure that that's solving the problem. And I hate to see that defeated with not a, without an outcome that can move us forward.
And Mr. Chairman, I didn't say take it out today. I'm saying that that will be the funding source for this first thing, so...
I understand that. It's committing it though. By the motion, it's committing it and I appreciate it.
My question stands, so if it's defeated, so be it, but I would like to, to send a message to our taxpayers that we are going, we've now, a site location, we now have a size. Now we have two-thirds of that money already reserved and have had the self-discipline not to spend that money outside there. So I think that, and what we do with the last $5 million, I'm wide open, but I think that the first $10 million, I think we have a fiduciary responsibility to be responsible to spend that money where we said we were going to, which is on our...
Todd had indicated he had a comment. Or question. Comments?
Yes, sir. I think, Ron, I hear you. I really do, you know, although I'm going to say this, I don't think we have to rush into that decision to commit the 10 million right now. Granted, it's not going to be paid tomorrow out of the checking account. I think we can take some time. If we have the half a million dollars to get the program on wheels right now, I think that buys us some time to look at it. If we commit 4,000 or 6,000 or eight, 4,000, excuse me, 4 million or 6 million or 8 million or whatever that number looks like, we can always go back and take more money out of our reserve. So I think we're, I don't think we have to go this fast on absolutely defining that we take that 10 million right now. And I think people would be more comfortable with a little more thought on it, time.
And that fits the timeline I'm thinking about. One of the things will be in August, we'll have a lot more, greater sense of enrollment and hopefully no calamities between now and then, but it just gives us some cushion time that I think's the right way.
Okay. Any other, any other discussion on the motion? And the motion is to take, to commit 10 million from the capital reserve fund and determine the, how to raise the rest of the money in the future. All right? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
New motion?
Well, I don't know if we need a new motion. If we have already authorized $500,000 for preliminary studies and the will of the board is that they want to reserve this question till the August meeting with additional information focused on how we raise the money, then we don't need another motion. We can just put that on the agenda for the August meeting. Now, if I hear some discussion where you don't want to do that and the board feels that we need some kind of a motion, fine, but if that's a consensus of the board, that's the way we'll handle it.
Mr. Chair, I don't think we need a motion. Just direction to the administration, but I would like to include our attorney in that. Come back to us with additional information on judicial confirmation, help educate us on that and what, specifically what that could mean for NIC, what kind of, would we fit the criteria? We really need to be educated on that. And then our bond counsel at that meeting and then maybe some information on tax anticipation notes.
Todd? I do have a question and, oh, no, I can't ask questions. She mentions the bond counsel. I take it the administration will determine that. I've got one group that's been here twice, Holly Troxel, but I've also had DA Davidson brief and I've also had Piper Jaffrey brief us. So I guess the staff will make the determination as to who, which is the bond counsel and who we use for the underwriting, go that direction.
Yeah, and yes, that would be the, that would be the normal process, but in terms of the presentation, we're basically trying to get anybody that'll come in here and do it for nothing.
That's what I was wondering, when she asked for presentation, I was wondering who's going to make that presentation. That's kind of where I was headed.
Or I guess, Mr. Chair, so that we aren't having them repeat themselves, maybe just make sure we have the same information and administration could even walk us through it.
In any event, we will put that on the August agenda and we'll try and provide as much information as may be necessary to make a decision at that time. So I think unless there's other motions with regard to the career technical education facility, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Any other? Yeah. I would ask for a recess at this time, but I really don't think we need it. My chair, board chair report is really, really minimal. June 30th, we are meeting with the Rathrum City Council at Rathrum City Hall and it will be a interesting discussion as the city of Rathrum has now succeeded in getting the K-Tech facility in their, in their city. And I hope that we'll have an opportunity to celebrate that with you folks when we get out there on the 30th. I want to remind you...
We'll have cookies for you.
Oh, good, cookies. That's always a good way to celebrate. And then on July 9th, I want to remind everybody of the really big raffle. That is a major fundraising event for NIC through the foundation. And to the extent that you haven't bought your ticket, you ought to buy them if they're available. They're all sold out, so sorry about that. We have on July 10th, the nurse, the practical nurse pinning ceremony. And then in August, we'll have our next board meeting. And with that, I'm, yes, for the good of the order. Judy?
A quick reminder and invite to all those who hear this before July 1st, when the IBE, Idaho Business for Education Group will be here in the north, ready to visit with businesses up here. The meeting will be on campus. Thank you campus for hospitality. Tuesday morning, the 1st, 7 to 9. There will also be a report on the workforce study survey that you all participated in last year. Contact me and we'll be glad to welcome you. We just need to count so we can provide a bit of breakfast for you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? I first, I would just like to suggest that this, this is a celebratory moment because we are moving forward, but I really want to acknowledge and thank the administration for the years now of effort that have gone into trying to help educate the board. I hope that we don't crush your spirit when we don't go the same way as you. It's really important that you're on board with us. We want this to succeed as much as you do. And you, I really hope you hear me when I tell you how much we appreciate, how much effort you put into this, Dr. Dunlap, certainly you and your administration has gone above and beyond. And, and I hope that we can come out of this together with excitement that we're moving forward.
Okay, Ron?
I would like to second that what Christie said, which is this is a big day for us. This is the day that I think Ken Howard thought he would retire before this vote ever happened. And he didn't think we could make a decision. Now we made one and there's going to be a certain amount of people that are not going to agree with this decision. But if we go back to the Croc Center, the Croc Center was a divided issue that turned out to be a tremendous jewel to this community. If we go to the Kuhn Field, it doesn't matter where you were on that or not, it's done, it's there. I think that this, this site out at K-Tech will be one of those economic engines that as we go back and we look back 10 years from now, we look backwards, we'll say this is probably one of the number one thing that attracted major corporations to move here because of what we've been able to do. So it wasn't personal, we just think that what we did was the right thing for our community and, and we're committed to making sure that this is successful, so.
Joe?
Yes. I just want to be real clear about this and that is that, well, first of all, Christie, I appreciate your comment earlier about hiring a good team because we do have a very good team. And this team, President's Cabinet, regardless of what their individual opinions may be, they have committed that once the decision is made, it will be supported 100%. And so you can have that expectation and you'll see that that will happen. And, you know, the folks sitting in front of you here with the President's Cabinet are the best team that I've ever worked with. And so you don't have to worry about whether it's going to be supported to the fullest extent or not. They will be there for this decision.
In closing, let me say that I, like probably every board member up here, has had discussions with a number of people in the community over the last year or so as we've discussed this, these issues. And almost universally, in fact, as I can't think of an exception to this, people have said, we know that you have a hard decision to make, we know that it's going to be a difficult decision, but whatever decision you make, we will support. So I think that it's more than just the community. I think it's more than, more than just the faculty and the staff. I think our community and the communities around us, the folks from Post Falls, the folks from Court Lane, all around have all said, once the decision is made, we're going to fall in behind it and it's going to work. And the only reason this won't work is because we don't want it to work. Well, if everybody wants it to work, it's going to work. And I have no doubt about the fact that now that we've made the decision, and congratulations to everybody, that I think that we will move forward and we'll get this done in a very expeditious and effective manner so we can solve the problems that we've got. With that, we're adjourned until August.
Happy summer, everybody.
Yes.
Summer.